Call the school board workshop, special session meeting to order. Welcome to everyone. This is really neat to see so many people here. I love it. We are here to do the business of the students of St. Lucy Public Schools and we welcome you. And welcome, board members, to this beautiful day. If you would please stand with me for the pledge and then the kids at Hope.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the treasure hunter pledge?
This is Rose.
Well, the treasure hunter, I am committed to serve with all the help, means and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Superintendent, we will turn it over to you.
Well, a couple of things that I wanted to cover. Mrs. Hawley, did you want to go into the school attorney or do you want me to wait? Okay, all right. I misunderstood. Okay. All right. So a couple of things that I wanted to just mention before we get rolling. I think the first thing that we noticed is we have more people here than we normally do. And, you know, it was very important, as I've been talking to our principals about our process, I want to share with the board how our process normally works. Many times, the presentations that I have for you, you're the first one to see it. And that same presentation is usually duplicated during the professional development for our principals. What I also mentioned, the principals, is we do have a very important year. This is, we're going to talk about basically sunsetting the FSA or the Florida Standards Assessment, and we now are taking the FAST assessment. We're going to go through a little bit of a history lesson with what that looks like and what, you know, how far we've come as a district. But I also wanted to mention, you know, all the principals. I think the head coach, Bill Parcells, once said that, you know, if you're going to have me cook dinner, let me pick the groceries. So the principals are my groceries. I've picked them all. I think they're fantastic people. They're true professionals. They're the right people in the right place at the right time to take our district to the next level. And as part of that process, many times they come to our evening board meetings, but they don't really see the interactions between the board and the superintendent or the board discussing issues. We have a lot of important issues that are coming up this year that, and I always talk to the principals about why decisions are made and why we do the things that we do and what are the implementations that we have that impact our schools. And I do think that it's very important as part of their professional development today. They've already had a session this morning on a number of topics, and today is their principals' meeting and as part of their principal meeting segment, the workshop is part of their professional development because I do think that they need to be informed and engaged in discussions that we have. I want to thank all of our board members for coming out to the groundbreaking. I want to thank Dave Alfonso. Where, Dave, where are you? You back there somewhere? And if he's not, he was, because I saw him earlier. But I also wanted to thank our chief of communications, Lydia Martin, Terrence O'Leary. It was a great event. I cannot thank our board members enough for being there. I had a lot of members of our community reach out to me and say what a fantastic event it was because that is a commitment we've made to put a flagship school in that community. Really thrilled about that. So the first thing really on our agenda is really not on the agenda per se. It's about kind of a local coaching legend, and that is Coach Wendell Adams. Coach Adams won recently his 500th basketball game. Now, I mean, that is to have that kind of excellence year after year is, if you've been in coaching at all, you know how almost impossible that is to do and what an accomplishment that is. And the principal had come to me about acknowledging Coach Adams and also potentially doing a ceremony and stenciling the actual, the LPA court and naming the court in his honor. And I'm going to ask Dr. Harrington to come up. This is not a voting item. It's just one of those consensus is not a violation of any of our policies, but it's kind of an acknowledgement of an amazing career and he's still going. And I wanted Dr. Harrington to come up and talk to the board. Dr. Harrington?
Thank you, Dr. Prince. Good morning, Madam Chair, school board members and Superintendent Dr. Prince. As the proud principal and proud alumna of Lincoln Park Academy, thank you for allowing me to make this special request on behalf of our school. As you know, Lincoln Park Academy this year is celebrating its centennial, having been established 100 years ago in September of 1923 as an all-black high school. From 1923 to 1953, Lincoln Park Academy served as an all-black school at Means Court and 13th Street. In 1953, it moved to its current location at Avenue I and 17th Street, where it continued to serve as an all-black high school until integration in 1970. In 1970, Lincoln Park Academy became an integrated school for all ninth graders in the county. And in 1985, it became the county's first academic magnet school as we know it today. For those who have longstanding roots in Fort Pierce, we know Lincoln Park Academy is a fabric woven into the lives of many. With this incredible history in the Fort Pierce community comes many lines of legacy. One such legacy shining very brightly right now is one I would like to share with you. Coach Wendell Adams currently serves Lincoln Park Academy as our ESC para professional and our girls' basketball coach. As is the history and legacy of Lincoln Park Academy, Coach Adams' parents both graduated from Lincoln Park Academy. His late father, John Adams, is a 1951 graduate of Lincoln Park Academy, where he was a member of the football and basketball teams. His late mother, Caritha Haynes Adams, is a 1958 graduate of Lincoln Park Academy, where she was a member of the girls' basketball team, the very sport her son, Coach Adams, is now coaching. Coach Adams himself attended Lincoln Park during the 1973-74 year as a ninth grader, and he's a class of 1977 graduate from Fort Pierce Central High School. Coach Adams' contributions to the St. Lucy County and to Lincoln Park Academy are so deep, it's hard to summarize, but I've tried to do so. Coach Adams was hired by St. Lucy Public Schools in 1985. He has served as an ESC para, a PE teacher, a reading teacher, and an ESE teacher, and he has worked at Lincoln Park for the last 18 years. His illustrious coaching career began in St. Lucy County in 1985. He served as an assistant girls' and boys' basketball coach for 13 years at Fort Pierce Westwood High School, Port St. Lucie High School, Lincoln Park Academy, and Fort Pierce Central High School. He was the assistant girls' basketball coach for Fort Pierce Central when they won the 3A state championship in 1987. In 2000, he was named the head girls' basketball coach at Lincoln Park Academy and for the last 24 years in that position, he has demonstrated the rewards which come with commitment, dedication, and grit. He has guided the LPA girls' basketball team to 16 district championship titles, six regional finals, one regional championship title, and one Final Four appearance. And most impressively, Coach Adams now holds the title of the winningest coach on the Treasure Coast with 503 career wins. He won his 500th game one week ago when LPA played Fort Pierce Westwood, a monumental career accomplishment and a testament to his legacy. As such, as principal of Lincoln Park Academy, I would like to formally request on behalf of the LPA family that the basketball court at Lincoln Park Academy be named the Wendell Adams Court in honor of his groundbreaking achievements. If approved, we would host an official court naming ceremony at our last home game of the season next Friday, February 2nd at 6:00 p.m., where we will unveil the new court design. And this summer, when our court is refurbished, Coach Wendell Adams' name will be stenciled on the court. Thank you for allowing me the time to share with you the accomplishments of an amazing coach, teacher, and mentor in Coach Wendell Adams.
Thank you, Dr. Harrington. All I can say is that is a high school Hall of Fame career that Coach Adams has had. The school is very supportive. I know the community is very supportive. And it's not necessarily a voting item, like a board voting item, but it's something I support and I wanted the board to be aware of. And also, basically, I wanted a consensus of the board that this is something that the board member supported because she does want to do this on February 2nd, which of course you would be invited at. It's a great time and opportunity to see the last home game of the girls' season, but I just wanted to bring this to the board. This actually did come to my attention in, over the summer, but I just didn't get back around to it because of some of the transitions we had with our leadership team that I just got a little bit distracted, but this did come back around to my attention. And I felt I didn't want to wait for another season. Wendell has won his 500th game. That is a huge milestone. And also, I didn't want to miss the end of the season this year with such a great milestone being reached, so I did want to bring it to the board today. So Chair Wynn Hawley, I'll take any comments.
Board members, to reach consensus, any comments before we?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Kelly?
Need approval of the Lincoln Park Academy request.
Okay. We don't really need a second to go along with that. We're going to go with a consensus vote, but any other comments?
Just when I coached at Lincoln Park for the four or five years that I was there coaching, I coached in the fall, and basketball's a spring sport, but yeah, he had his players out there almost every day conditioning. So this man has definitely given his whole entire life to this career and it's more deserving. So I fully concur.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Dr. Mills?
I also want to say that Coach Adams has been a longtime community person here, and he brings about a lot of history for St. Lucy County. I'm sure through all of that, he has a rich story to even tell. But it is good that we would, I definitely agree with the consensus of yes, this court definitely needs to be named after Coach Adams. Lincoln Park has incredible history here and have gone through such history, both good and bad, to come to the place where we are today as not only a county but as a country. And so, all of that in honoring this man signifies where we come from and where we are yet going. So I appreciate, Dr. Harrington, you presenting this to us today and giving Mr. Adams the recognition that he deserves. Thank you.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes, I concur with everything that was said today. I did the math. He's been with the district for 39 years. That's a long time, and it speaks to the lives that he has mentored and invested in. So I do, I do concur. Thank you.
Board members, we will acknowledge this with a thumbs up, consensus to move ahead. unanimous, thank you, Dr. Harrington, for presenting and Dr. Prince for bringing it forth today. I can't think of a better way to honor Coach Adams.
Okay, I can't think of a more exciting time to pivot to one of my favorite topics, policy and Neola. And I'm going to ask Dr. Wild, our deputy superintendent, to come forward and give the board an update. You do have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Prince. This is also my favorite topic. We're going to be talking today, just an overview of where we are with the Neola school board adoption process as we transition our policies from our traditional St. Lucy developed policies to utilizing Neola as a company to help us with the process. Just a reminder for you as well as our audience, what Neola does. They are a company that works nationwide, and they do work with school districts across the country developing a standardized school board policy system. And in Florida, the numbers that they use, the school board policy numbers are standardized. So all Neola districts have the same board policy number associated with each policy, which is very helpful to us when we collaborate with other districts. I think most importantly, they closely monitor all legislative action and state board rule changes, and they look to see which ones impact board policies either as an optional update to policies or a required update. So therefore, we are insured that we don't miss anything and that we stay very current and very much in compliance. Another benefit of working with Neola is that we still maintain flexibility to develop our own policies. If we prefer our own language or our historical policy over theirs, we can still do that, and we have been taking advantage of that as well. They are staffed with a host of attorneys and school leaders, retired administrators across the country. And they also warrant their language. If you're challenged about your language being in compliance with legislation, they warrant that their language is in compliance. And just an update since last time, there are now more districts using Neola than there were when we first talked to you. There's 34 school districts, plus IRSC has adopted the use of Neola.
Before we go, before you, could you tell everyone that's watching at home what Neola stands for? We do that.
I knew you were going to say that.
They have no idea.
So Neola, actually, they use the word now, not the acronym, but it started as the Northeast Ohio Learning Association?
That's right.
Okay. Passed the test. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And so, now they use the term Neola because everybody just calls them Neola, and they serve the whole country. The last time that they were here, they presented to you, well, the last time they were here for a school board meeting, they presented to you, it was February 22nd, 2022. And at that time, we knew this was going to be a major effort, and there's a two-year contract that we signed with them that was signed March 8th, 2022. The process that we went through, this process was really led by the legal department, and I want to thank Barbara Sataka, Lauren Sweet, and Marnie Fisher, who have done a lot of work with all of the district-level departments to get this done. So their first step was to do sort of a crosswalk of our current policies to Neola policies and then divvy up the work across district departments. And many leaders in here that oversee different departments that are impacted by policy took part in this work. And then each of their visits, Neola would come here and the work was chunked so that we took a certain number of policies at a time. We were all trained at the district level on the how, the nuts and bolts of how you use board docs to make these changes, how do you accept their policy or edit ours and so forth. 20 district staff members were trained by them at that point. And then I've listed here for you all of the dates that they came to St. Lucy County in person and worked with us. And every time they came, it was a multi-day event with the last one spanning three days, November 13th, 14th, and 15th. Every Neola policy was reviewed by this, by this team of people with a point person responsible, and the task was to look at our current policy, if there was one, and compare it to the Neola policy and vice versa, back and forth. If the current policy, if our current policy had language that we wanted to keep, we did so. We moved it into the Neola policy. Sometimes it was a combination of our language or theirs. Sometimes we just fully adopted theirs. Bylaws, which is the first section of the policies that you'll see when you have access, we worked collaboratively with Debbie Holly on those. Those are the board policies most closely related to the board actions. And as you know, Debbie Holly for years has served as a representative for the board when it comes to policy. We do have a policy review committee, and she has been the longstanding member of that. I want to just be very clear that this transition from our current policies to Neola is not a way for us to change any substantive policies. We are really just moving to a new system. We, anything that is any kind of substantive change will be brought to you separately. We, since we started this, we have brought you some code of conduct issues. We had the conversation with you about speakers at the board meeting. We're not making any changes through this process. We're just choosing their wording, their numbering system, and making sure that if there was some legislative change that's taken place since we last updated, that we have updated our policy. And sometimes it's one word, must versus shall, but it's legislatively required. And just to get an understanding of the work that took place over this time period is, one of the reasons that we went with this change is that there's so much activity legislatively in the state of Florida in recent years. So many laws passed that have to do with education that require us to update our language, and we don't want to miss anything. But just since we started this process, look at all the policies that have changed. And the reason I illustrate this for you is the staff literally would adopt a new policy, you know, make a change in the system to select the language from Neola, and then there would be a state board rule change or a new law, and we had to go back and do it again. So many of these policies, we have literally touched three, four times to get to where we are today. In total, there's been 237 Neola policies that have had to have an adjustment based on legislative change since we started. So not only does this illustrate the work that went into it, more importantly, it confirms our need to have this resource to help us stay current in our policies. So our goal now is for you as board members to be able to have access to all of the Neola policies that we've worked on by February 9th. Also, we will have Jennifer advertise those policies in the newspaper, and it literally is the archiving of our current policies and the adoption of a whole new book. So it looks different than your normal red line edits. You'll just receive a whole new book. The other thing is we will provide you with training and understanding of how to look at it. Every policy now is divided up into student, instructional staff, administrator staff. So one topic can be covered in multiple places specific to that audience. February 27th is our next board workshop, and if we need to put it on the agenda for discussion at that point, we will. So we're asking that if you have questions to reach out, you can reach out to me. We'll schedule a meeting with you individually to go through it and to walk you through it or explain it or answer any questions. Or if you'd rather just send us questions, at that point, we would put it on the board workshop for discussion on February 27th. And then on March 12th, our goal is for that to be the day that we do the public hearing and do the adoption of the new Neola policies. And once adopted, after that board meeting, we will archive our current policies so they'll still be available for reference, and we will adopt and go live with our new policies. Yes, Mr. Ingersoll?
I'm zoning in now. February the 9th, you talked about a red book. Are we going to get it online though, too?
Yes, it will be online. It's actually all online. Thank you for that. And it is in board docs, the current tool that you utilize. Thank you. Good question. The next step for us as staff, this doesn't have to worry the board members, the next step for us is Neola also has processes and forms that go, that align to their policies. So if we choose to use one of their forms and archive one of our forms, this is for the operational side, we can do so. So we'll be looking at that after this process is over. And that is the end of the Neola policy discussion. Are there any other questions?
I do have a question. You mentioned training for the board to go through the policies. I'm looking forward to that and would like for you to be able to give us a date for that training so that I can put it on my calendar.
Yes, I will. I will reach out to Neola. I'm not positive if it's going to be a prerecorded training that you can look at or if it'll be something that you sign into on Teams. So I will get that information out to you immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Is this training, like, all the board, if one-on-one, or is it, like you said, the Teams where everybody is on the Teams?
I think it'll be individualized so that you can go through it at your own pace. But if it would help to bring you all together and do something together, we could certainly do that as well.
No, I'm just asking because I don't know what that would look like.
Does the board have a preference for that, Mrs. Hawley?
Board members, any thought? If it's available online, I would think it would be easiest for each board member to kind of go at their own pace. And if there are substantial questions or concerns, it needs to be brought to the full body for discussion. Training, I think, could happen individually.
So this is a book that's separated in three sections at least. So we're talking about maybe more than 25 pages to go through. So how do, how do we, what is that going to look like for us?
They use the term book when they talk about a full book of policies. It's actually, if you, if you look at the way our policies are now, it's on board docs. It's the same as that, but the numbering system is different, where you find the policies are different. And if there's a policy on, if there's a policy on a topic, it's, if it relates to instructional staff and administrators, you'll find it in both sections. If it also relates to students, you'll also find it in a student section. And it starts with a bylaw section, and that'll all be what we walk you through to show you as, when it's released to you. It's quite simple once you get into it in terms of walking through it because it's not that different than what you're used to already. It's just a new numbering system.
Okay, I guess my question and concern is the timeline, that it's maybe more than 25 pages to get through to make sure that we understand what's in it, you know. So is that sufficient time for us to, you know, look through it with a magnifying glass to make sure that, you know, we are comfortable with it?
Yes, I think that, that's really why I wanted to emphasize that we're not changing content within it. So I think that most of you will read the details in the policies that are most important and critical to you. It is a lot of reading. If you try to read all of our current policies now from start to finish, it is very time-consuming. But we do believe that you could get through it all if you did desire to do that.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Dr. Wild, obviously, this is a public records, so, I mean, when it, when it gets out on the 9th, it's open to everybody. But when is it open to the principals?
The same time.
Same time?
Uh huh. And going forward, when we adopt this, we will still maintain our exact same policy adoption process. Any changes, whether it's Neola recommended or not, will still go through the policy review committee and come to you for separate vote. And that is still how we intend on any substantive changes.
And Dr. Wild, I appreciate you emphasizing the fact that these aren't new policies.
Right.
They're simply being brought forth in a new structure and form that's easier to look at. And it's kind of ironic that March 12th would be the date it would come before us because the session ends right about then, and we'll probably be inundated with another couple hundred changes.
That is a good point. The longer we delay, the more we have to go back and redo the policies before they come to you, and it really is an easier process once they're fully adopted. Good point.
Dr. Wild, in the past, we've seen the line through it and the words changed. That, that system won't change moving forward, correct?
After this adoption of all of them, you'll still see that. You'll still have access to edited versions, red line crossout, yes.
Thank you.
And even with this whole process we went through, we still have access to the work that we did in archiving, but you will see the whole new clean set of policies.
And just to reiterate, the, the nuts and bolts in the content of policies have, are mostly all unchanged. It's just the language, the wording, the numbering. You know, I think the most substantial change is based on the board meeting we had with regards to scheduled and unscheduled speakers. Based on that, that, that meeting, you know, we went in, watched the meeting again, you know, tried to cobble together a semblance of an adjustment that would, that would please the board. I would encourage you to look closely at that because, you know, that's probably the most significant adjustment or change as part of this. All the others are really not much change at all, and we would highlight for the board anything that was substantial so that you'd be aware in advance.
And there are legislative requirements that we're already following.
And now, now that you bring up the scheduled, non-scheduled speakers, does this include the policy about, you know, the... the policy about, you know, the 10-foot signs that people were holding up? We're going to put that into effect, too?
We have a proposed policy for the board to review with signage. Yes, Mr. Kelly?
February 27th.
Yes.
And the last question I have, and when I read you this, I would prefer, Madam Chair, that when I go over this, I would prefer any questions that I have to just meet privately with John or Helen rather than, because I do not have the knowledge that most of our experienced people do, and the questions will probably be redundant for you. So I would rather do that. And the other question I have is, this is Neola's policies. Do we have to accept the whole thing or can we knit and pick and pick? I know it's rhetorical, the question, but we can change policies to fit our board's needs.
Absolutely. In some cases, we accepted the whole thing as is because it said the same thing as ours.
Yeah.
In some cases, we did insert some of our current language that might have been more specific or still in compliance with the law, and we preferred. So it's a mix. And in some cases, we don't have a policy on something, we didn't adopt one.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Kelly, because that was my question. There are changes. You have adopted policies from Neola that is not the same verbiage as our policy. So that's what I'm talking about, going through it. Like you said, the should versus the shall or the must versus the, you know, that means something if I said should or shall. Okay? So that's what I'm talking about. Those changes, will we be aware of the fact that these are Neola-adapted policies or, you know, there is a should instead of a shall? Are we going to, because that makes a difference?
There'll be a place where you can look at that, yes. But we didn't do that, and Neola doesn't do it just because they want to. It's only if it's required. So if our policy hadn't been updated and wasn't current and in line with the legislation, that's where we had to change it. So if the law says you have to say "shall," we had to change it to "shall." So we didn't do it because we liked the wording better or to change the meeting intentionally only if it was required. Does that make sense or answer your question?
I guess it will answer my question when I see it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think what we're saying is one size doesn't fit all. St. Lucie County is not Monroe County. We're not Fairfield County, Connecticut. We're quite different, and I think better. You know, I really do. That's all I got.
And I'm hearing very clearly that what has been changed is based on legislation. It had to be changed, the "shall" or the "should," that type of thing.
Yes, and I'm just giving that example. And when legislation passes, it sometimes says it must be in your board policy. So if we didn't have a board policy to address it, we did have to add it. And then if we did pick their wording instead of our wording, we did that if it didn't change the meaning. The process didn't impact us at all. It's just their wording, then they warrant the language. So if we choose their wording, they warrant the language. If we use our wording, they don't.
Well, thank you, Dr. Wild. It's been a yeoman's lift over these last couple of years getting this all together, but it gives me great comfort to know that we are in full compliance with the law.
Yes.
When this process is finished, and going forward, it will be a much simpler task to just make the changes as legislation warrants.
Yes, it certainly will.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, I want to thank Ms. Holly for serving on that committee. That's a tedious committee, and I appreciate your time and efforts in this endeavor.
And I would like to give a special shout-out to Dr. Helen Wild, who absolutely goes through thousands of pages of legislation and policy and actually seems to enjoy it, so.
It's riveting, I really do.
It is kind of weird that we kind of really look for.
And while we're giving those shout-outs, I would also include our district attorneys who have really had to go through. They're the ones that really have had to go through each and every change. So we shout out to you guys as well. Thank you.
All right, and it does take a village. I want to thank my senior leadership team, Cabinet, because each of you had review as part of your departments, and I just want to thank you for that. We're going to be pivoting a little, slightly, to a presentation that is probably going to be the crux of today, whenever I said that this is something that I would be presenting to the board. And then the principals, guess what, principals? I'm killing two birds with one stone. So the presentation you would have received, you're going to get a single dose of it today at the same concurrent time as the board. I'd ask Ms. Martin. So you've been given a couple documents. I'd ask you to hold on until I orient you to what they are, because not only are you getting a PowerPoint, and this, I'm going to go through a couple of slides in the PowerPoint, and then, Doc, I'm going to turn it over to my chief of schools, Dr. Summer. So what we're going to talk about is I want to give you some historical perspective on assessments, all right? And, you know, give you the history of where we've been as a district. And then Dr. Summer is going to get into kind of where we've been and where we are now. And also, we just took the new FAST assessment, and we got baseline school grades. And the last time we've gone through this process is 2015, when we went from the FCAT in 2014 to the FSA in 2015. So I kind of wanted to give everybody a history lesson, and also, this is even for our principals. Many of our principals weren't around for the FCAT and became principals during the FSA, and it just gives some historical context to them as well. And I think some of the things that I coached them and talked to them about, once again, we go back to the why we do some of the things we do. I just wanted to provide some contextual information. So I'm going to get into ranking. Now, you know, this past year, we've talked a lot, or I've talked a lot, about where we rank as a district. Those are important. In the state accountability system, we're measured on 11 different things. And each of those different things accumulate to where the state rates us an A, B, C, D, F. Our goal is to be an A-rated school district. In order to be an A-rated school district, we have to improve our positioning as part of that ranking because at about, as districts that are ranked 20 or higher overall, tend to be ranked A-rated districts. That is our goal. So that's why the accumulation of all those cells are really important, and your positioning in those cells is critically important. And I want to explain that in just a minute. I also want to explain the lunacy sometimes of state assessments and how frustrating that this can be with regards to changing assessments and standardized testing and really the truth about standardized testing. And I want to level with the board. I think the principals know this, but I just need the board to be aware of sometimes the frustrations with assessments. District grades and baseline performance, and then SLPS performance, we're going to talk about 2023 versus 2015, when we went through this process and what we looked like as a district and what we look like now. And then Dr. Summer is going to be doing a lot of this, a performance update right now on our PM 1 and PM 2. And then our strategies, how do we support our schools and systems for improvement? And then we'll do a Q and A. Now, we may build a break in the middle of this. I just wanted you to be aware, you know, I expect this to be kind of the most time-consuming thing we do today. So the first slide I'm going to share is this. This was our proficiency, the percent of students that were reading on grade level. We were at 52% the last year of the FCAT. Okay? The, I already did it once, Jack. I just said, okay. All right, so 13-14 state, they were at 55%. So there was a three-percentage gap there in the difference. And then when we looked at 14-15, our SLPS reading, we were at 46%. The state was 52. So that gap actually widened. But what's interesting, in 13-14, under the FCAT, we were a C-rated district. And I'm going to go back to why that's so important, because the positioning of our district is critically important, and the rate that we move up or move down impacts our school grade or district grade. And you can see when we converted from the FCAT to the FSA, the state dropped by 3%, but our district dropped by 6%. Pretty substantial when we had that first baseline change. And I'm going to come back to this in a minute, but it's really important to know. But I want to compare this now. This was 2014-15. So we really, truly regressed twice the state average in 2015 when we changed assessments. But when we look at the FSA to FAST now, you can see that we had a 2% regression and so did the state, a 2% regression. However, our grade was a B. So I'm going to, you know, submit to you this fact. The percent of our students reading on grade level is critically important, but I'm going to get into a lot of other metrics that are very important to the health of a district. And I'm also going to illustrate to you how difficult it is to move reading proficiency. And you're going to see the lunacy of that in just a moment. So state assessments, proficiency versus state ranking, and why is ranking important? So one of our board members had mentioned in the December when our district grade came out, you know, we should be, if our core mission is teaching and learning, we should be able to improve our reading proficiency by 5%. We should be able to do that in a year. Let's take the FSA. First of all, I want to talk about that. And who do we aspire to be? My goal as superintendent is to improve our reading proficiency. That's a no-brainer, right? I mean, I would tell every, all of our principals, I'd tell our cabinet, I want to improve our reading proficiency. But let's just take the last assessment, the FSA. The FSA, the Florida Standards Assessment over seven years. This is how many districts improved overall reading proficiency by 5% or more in that seven-year period? I'm going to make an assumption that 67 districts, all of our priorities are teaching and learning, right? We're all moving, we're taking the same test year after year after year. We're taking the same test. We should be pretty good at it. But this is what we feel like. A hamster in a wheel. And the reason I use that analogy, okay, is that this, district reading proficiency performance of seven-year period. So out of 67 counties, I'd ask the principals, in your mind, how many districts in a seven-year period improved by 5%? 5%, not in a year, but 5% over seven years. Out of 67 districts, I'm going to start with 37 went down. More than half the school districts in the state actually declined in reading proficiency over a seven-year period taking the same test. Seven stayed the same. In fact, the state's, the state's one of those. The state, there was no change. No change. I will tell you, there is rarefied air. There's rarefied air because three districts out of 67 improved. The ceiling was 6%. Two districts had 5%, one district had 6%. 14 districts had 2% to 4%. I'm proud to say St. Lucie County Public Schools was one of those districts. We were, you know, in the top 17 in the state when it comes to movement of students in reading proficiency. Six of them had a 1% gain. So let's take a look at those three districts. What do those three districts look like? Nope. Nope. You can guess, but I'm going to say this, all students are capable of success, no exceptions. Now, I believe that. I believe that as our mantra. I believe all students are capable of success, no exceptions. I'd also like to argue that sometimes in a race, it's not how you start, it's how you finish. Third-grade proficiency is important, but would I rather have success with third-grade proficiency or graduation rate? And I'm going to tell you, I'd rather graduate kids because that means wherever they come to us from, however they walk in the door, over their time with us, I'm going to make sure they can pass that reading test, that math test, they get their 24 credits, and they get their 2.0 GPA. It's the finish line. Because if you don't graduate with a high school diploma, you have a ceiling. All the research suggests that. So who are the superlative districts, Mr. Ingersoll? You were guessing the 5% and 6%?
I would say that, but after doing the math, once you're at a certain level, it's hard to go up that 5%. So the districts that I said were more affluent wouldn't probably come into that account.
Well, those guesses were right off, not even close. Madison.
That's what I said. Once I said it, then I was like, wait a minute, they can't have a 5% growth once they're already at a certain level. It would have to be some of the middle, middle.
Well, I'd like to say that, first of all, you have it in front of you. It's this color-coded spreadsheet. It's sorted from highest to lowest. But I'm going to go ahead and tell you, it's Madison County, Lafayette County, Hardy County, and St. Lucie was plus-two. Now, if I were to say, wow, let's take a look at those counties, this is us compared to them. It's like the sun compared to a tiny mercury. We tested about 26,000 students. We have about 44,000. Those districts are very, very small. Hardy's at 4,900, Lafayette 1,100, Madison 2,400. The, and when I make the argument, it's more important where you finish than where you start, let's look at those graduation rates of those counties and the number of students that they graduate. Right now, and this was last year, by the way, I've got great news about our graduation rate because we improved, but we were at 90.8%, yet about 46% of our third graders are reading on grade level. But by the time they graduate, they can pass an algebra test and they can pass a reading test. So, you know, we can, you know, look at this through a lens of can we do better? Yeah, we can do better. We can do better. But statewide, when we're all rowing, we're all trying to accomplish the same thing, the fact that only a few can do it, is really startling. Now, I would say opportunity should be colorblind. And when we're only talking about one metric, I want more kids to read. That is absolutely important. But these principals, they've got seven and eight cells, nine cells in their accountability systems. In fact, I'm going to show you, if we take a look, I'm just going to compare us to these districts that were the high rollers when it came to improving reading. This is the ranking, not the percent proficient. If you take a look, this is their rank in every one of those categories. All of those categories are measured by the state to determine if we're an A, B, C, D, F. And you can see on the far right-hand side that we've got some real strengths in our rankings. Now, if I superimpose, first of all, Lafayette's a very small county, and it's a very rural area, and they're an A-rated district, and congratulations. But if I have superimposed their reading proficiency in that line out of 67 counties, this is the percentage of students that read on grade level in those districts. And Hardy is very comparable to St. Lucie. In fact, it's almost identical when it comes to the percentage of students that read on grade level. However, they're a C-rated district because in other areas, we are very strong and they are very weak. Let's take a look at where St. Lucie's really strong. Our lowest 25%, we ranked 25th in the state. That means we're moving our lowest-performing students. Our lowest-performing children are getting a great opportunity in St. Lucie County. Our math-lowest-performing, we're ranked 22 out of 67 counties. Once again, our lowest-performing students are getting the most support from us. Now we talk about how we've transformed this district, and this is the most proud of, and I'm not looking at my principals, but I'm going to tell you, our philosophies. Opportunity is colorblind. Opportunity is colorblind. We ranked 11th in middle school acceleration. What does that mean? That means we've tripled the number of Black and Hispanic kids taking algebra and geometry in middle school, taking high school credits that opened the door for them to take college credits in high school. That's why we're fifth in college and career acceleration because our kids are either taking college classes. I was one of seven kids, only child in my family to go to college. 48% of the graduating class at Westwood enrolled at IRSC. 48% of the graduating class at Westwood enrolled at IRSC. That's incredible. The bottom line is we're creating first-generation college students. This is a philosophy of breaking down barriers for children and not having barriers that we are going to open doors for kids so that they can be first-generation college kids. This is why ranking is so important for the board members to understand and our principals. When I talk about this, I think they have a better understanding of it because it's where, you know, we're the hamster in a wheel on a proficiency test. We're all taking the same test and nobody really goes anywhere. But I can tell you right now, when it comes to positioning, it's how I rank compared to everybody else that is going to determine my school grade and my district grade. And I'm very proud of, most important is the graduation rate. The health of your district is directly correlated, directly correlated to graduation rate. Do you know why the business community is so behind us right now? Because of our current technical education programs that we're graduating kids that can go and work for their industries. And they see it, they see it. And the families see the fact that we're graduating kids with AA degrees and Bright Future scholarships so they can walk into school and get a college education or they can walk into the world of work and get a job. Lastly, district grade. I have a pathway for us to be an A and it may not happen this year, but we have a pathway. And it is a very, very defined pathway. And for a school with our economic, our school, for a district with our economic challenges, we have to work to get it. We can't phone that in. That has, it's going to take work and it takes work across 11 cells. It's not just one. If I spend all my time focusing on one thing, I don't see the forest through the trees. Everybody wants an A-rated school. Everybody wants an A-rated district. Graduation rates, this is something we should celebrate. I want the high school principals to stand up. High school? Stand up for a minute. Our graduation rate just came out and, and last year, the legislator made it harder for our students to graduate. They made it harder, but we still graduated kids at an exceptional rate. One of the top in the state, take a look up here. Six for ESC students in the state, seventh for black children, eighth for kids on free reduced lunch, ninth for our Hispanic kids, 12th for ELL learners, 22nd for white. The bottom line is these high school principals are mayors of cities that are larger than most cities in our county in, in the state of Florida. You drive through population, 1,246. All of these schools have large populations, they are mayors, and they're just trying to make sure every kid has an opportunity. And I cannot commend them because it is not only my favorite job I ever did, but I, I know how hard it is every day. So thank you, principals, high school principal, I want to thank all of them. But that just came out yesterday and you guys can sit down. It was really interesting how the state dropped that. Usually the state meets with superintendents in advance and they go through their bid about how wonderful everybody is. They dropped them yesterday at 4:33 in the afternoon with nothing. Heard no, nothing about it. But the good news for us is St. Lucie County has a great story because we do an amazing job with our kids. That concludes my portion. I'm going to ask Dr. Summer to come up. And what I, what I framed initially was really before we get into our school grades that just came out in December and also the district grades, Dr. Summer's going to go through all that. But I just wanted to frame for the board, as we put to rest, rest in peace, Florida Standards Assessment, I wanted to give the board an idea of how the state has progressed on that assessment over seven years, how difficult it is to move these things. And now we've got a baseline score for the FAST assessment. And my goal is to make sure that we move kids, but we not just, you know, we have to look at the entire puzzle, not just one piece of the puzzle. Dr. Summer?
John, can I just?
Any questions, I'm sorry.
Yeah, not a question, but I didn't hear it mentioned, you know, rank, why rank is important? And I agree to a certain level, but it was not mentioned though, that I saw on television last night that, and I bring this up once in a while, Ms. Holly knows, I love to talk about Martin County. But the graduation rates were released yesterday, new ones. And I think I just want to verify, we were higher than Martin County again this year? Our graduation was higher than our southern neighbor?
Well, I, I'm, actually, Mr. Kelly, I want you to, yes, the answer is yes. We had, we had a higher graduation than Martin County. I'm really proud of that. However, what I want as part of Dr. Summer's presentation, you're going to see our success compared to our Treasure Coast, our area districts over a period of time, including last year or the, the first year of the FAST. In addition to that, you know, we threw in Palm Beach County as well because, you know, that's our biggest media market. So I'd encourage you, we'll take a break after Dr. Summer's first segment. So if you want to come back and ask, you know, ask any questions, we will, but Craig's going to cover exactly that.
That wasn't a question, that was rhetorical. And again, we were higher than Martin, was that the third year in a row now that we're higher than Martin County, Troy? That would be three years, yes. Also, one other thing that wasn't mentioned about rank and achievements, that we had Lincoln Park Academy principal here. Isn't Lincoln Park Academy still one of the top, in the top 100 schools in the United States of America? I think we're number 71, is that true?
LPA continues to rank, yes, absolutely. They're, they're one of the.
Is he up for reelection?
No. I'm not saying anything.
I think what I want to say is more of a comment than a question in that it is amazing where we've come from and where we are now and directly at the graduation rate. And also for the community, I just want to emphasize what you said, Dr. Prince. The community must understand this. Even though we are working earnestly for this third grade reading to increase, it takes, it's, it's within those 12 years of what we are doing with the children from the beginning to graduation. And graduation does, I just want to reemphasize, proves the advancement of what we have done with our kids because they cannot pass state exams unless they can read and do math. This is state exam requirement for every district, the 67 districts. They must, those kids must pass these state exams and, and they have to be able to read. They have to be able to do math to a certain degree. And if they don't pass the exams, what happens? They do not graduate. We just graduated a class, a winter graduation. Those children had to pass those exams and that is why they could not graduate with their cohorts. So we have to understand that it takes every year, every year that we have that child, we must work earnestly to get that child to the point where they can eventually pass these exams and graduate.
I wanted that, you brought up a great point, Dr. Mills. I also wanted to add too, and I want to commend Dr. Jamison, Dr. Sunny Booker. Just, you know, if a student doesn't graduate in four years, we don't just discard them. You know, yeah, we, we don't. We, we make sure they're still in school. Dr. Jamison does an amazing job at Performance Based with kids that are behind in credits. COVID did a number on a lot of, especially our high school kids. And they just disconnected from school, they failed, they, their GPAs were lowered, they needed remediation. And that's happening every day at Performance Based. A lot of people really don't recognize that we hold on to kids that don't graduate because we're going to support them. I will commend Sunny Booker because she's absolutely relentless about making sure kids test. If they've got to get tutoring, retest, whatever it takes, we're going to make sure that even paying for an SAT is not a barrier because those exams cost money. And we're going to make sure kids have opportunities. And I think that sometimes those things get lost. You know, our graduation rate is 92%. That means 8%, where are they? You know, and, and we want to make sure that almost all of those 8% are sitting in one of our schools, finishing their education and making sure they get a high school diploma. Because it's, it's a life changer, it's an absolute life changer with, with kids that do not graduate from high school. So thanks for pointing that out.
Good point.
Well, good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, School Board, Dr. Prince, and of course, everybody in this lovely audience today. It's an honor to be here. I want to give a shout out to Cole Escher as well as Dr. Ocampo for helping with this slide deck. Thank you for working over the weekend to get this done. So pointing us back to the agenda, Dr. Prince spoke about why is rank important, which it really is. I'll be touching on that as well, but I'll also be discussing state assessments. What does that look like from the student eyes and what's the student experience? As well as our performance and really looking at how do we compare? And of course, going forward. We'll take a break somewhere in the middle, as Dr. Prince said. And I put Q and A here at the end, but really after each section, we'll pause and just ask if there's any questions. So if you look at what's important for us is as we look at our results from 2023, we just want to point back to our strategic plan with a little bit of a focus of goal two from that plan, which was improving ELA performance. Again, this was 2223 strategic plan because that's the data that we're looking at. So let's take a step back for just a minute because as we know as educators, we love talk soup. We love to use acronyms and probably our favorite are testing acronyms like the FAST. So in 2022, 2023, we officially switched over to the FAST. What does the FAST assess in reading and math? The best standards. And if you ever think, what does FAST stand for? It's the Florida Assessment of Student Thinking. What are the best standards, pun intended? It's the benchmarks for excellent student thinking. And those are the standards that we teach as per the state. Those are the standards that are assessed in the FAST. When it comes to students, we have to ask, well, who's tested? Every student, grade three through 10, is tested in, on the FAST reading. Students in grades three through eight are tested in the FAST math. Students in grades five and eight are tested in science. And then we have our EOCs. Have you ever heard the term EOC stands for End of Course Exam? That's not by grade level, that is by course. So all students enrolled in those particular courses that are listed are the ones that have to take the EOC. That is Algebra I, Geometry, Biology, Civics, and US History. And that's each year. When it comes to the test design, just to get some more talk soup out of the way, we, you may hear the term PM, stands for Progress Monitoring. The state actually requires us to test three times per year in reading and math, primarily for grades, for, for reading and math, grades three through eight in math, three through 10 in reading. The first progress monitoring assessment happens in the beginning of the year. You can see in the chart and the window opens up in August, finishes in September. The purpose is to set it up as a beginning of the year baseline. So every student in grade three through 10, as an example, will take a baseline assessment called PM1 or Progress Monitoring 1. In the middle of the year, our students take a mid-year assessment called PM2 or Progress Monitoring 2. Finally, and you can see the outlined in the red, at the end of the year in May, students take Progress Monitoring 3 or PM3. And the purpose of that is as the summative assessment. So if you remember back to FSA and FAST before we had progress monitoring, this is very similar. This is where our state accountability sits for all of our students in those grade levels.
Can I just, real quick, and I don't want to just pick on Dr. Helen, but I appreciate that, Progress Monitoring instead of, you know, could you tell everybody what ELA is and BEST stands for? With people watching home, they have no idea.
Yes, so when you, when you, when you hear ELA, and I appreciate that question, when you hear ELA, it stands for English Language Arts. And it really, to simplify it, stands for reading, right? And when it comes to the best, those are the benchmarks for excellent student thinking. That's the, that's the curriculum that we are required to teach as per the state. Okay? So the PM3 is our summative assessment. And all the data that we'll talk about at the year end for grades three through 10 in reading as an example, all come from PM3 or Progress Monitoring 3. Want to level set that. And we thought it was worth spending the time to make sure we're clear. And then just really thinking about test design in the bottom part of the slide. How many questions do the kids get asked? How long is the test? So in reading, it's approximately 90 minutes for both PM1 and PM2. In math, there's a range based on your grade level, about 80 to 100 minutes for our standard test takers. Some students may get some extended time based on an IEP or an LEP, but that's the standard. And that's for reading and math. And kids get about 35 to 40 questions. So for reading and math now, for the FAST, that's what kids will take in PM1 and PM2 for that beginning of year and for that baseline, that mid-year assessment. End of the year is a little bit longer or PM3 or Progress Monitoring 3. And everyone tests at the end of the year, including the EOCs, which don't take PM1 and PM2. At the end of the year, it's a little bit longer, reading is 120 minutes, math is between 100 and 120. And our end of course exams, like that biology, that algebra, that's 160 minutes. And the questions are a little bit longer, 40 to 45. And there's some field tested questions. Not every question kids get in those tests are actually going to count towards their score. The state's using them to determine how good those questions are.
Craig?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back one slide? There, thanks. I just wanted to point out in a few minutes, Craig is going to be sharing some PM data with you. And I'm just going to acknowledge that, that the window, many students still have not tested. The window goes until the 26th. So some of the data we're going to share doesn't include some sets of students that may impact that by one or 2%. Sorry, Craig, you're probably going to mention it.
No, I'm glad I went back because it's a good thing to point out that at the bottom of the slide, even though PM1 is a baseline kids take in August or September and PM2 is a mid-year, students are assessed in reading and math at the full standards for that, for that year. So that's why we see progress throughout the year. They're actually assessed on standards that are not yet taught as per the state. Worth noting. Now, once the testing window is over, kids get put into a level classification. And again, we're talking about PM3. When they take that summative assessment at the end of the year between the beginning and ending of May, when the kids take a reading test or the ELA exam, but when they take that test, they're given a level. And if they score between levels three and five, which represent at grade level, essentially for grade level three, there's a little bit of, I'm going to use that simplified term for, for today's purpose. The states change the definition slightly. Level four is above grade level, as is five. Those students should really be successful in their next year's class. Those students are considered proficient. So if you score three, four, or five, for our purposes, for this discussion, that's when we talk about our proficient students. Okay? More on that in a minute. Also worth mentioning that if you score a level one or a level two, you're likely to need significant or substantial help for the next school year. One is lower than two. And if you look at, when you hear the term low 25, as you can see in the red, that is our bottom quartile. For most of our schools, our low 25 sit in level one and some of the lower kids in level two. And I'm simplifying, each school's slightly different, as is each district, but it's typically where they sit. And when you think about the baseline years, which we'll talk about, unfortunately, we did not get any credit in this past school year for moving kids up levels from level one to level two. This year, learning gains didn't count, as we'll see in just a second. So let's transition to state assessments. Now that we know a little about how kids are tested and where the levels come from. When it comes to state assessments, this goes into, as Dr. Prince was just sharing, what are, how our district grade works. So as kids take that ELA exam, they're placed into level. So first of all, when you look at our previous year, again, we're looking at FY23, which was last school year, when we talked about how we were a B district. First things first, if you look at to the right, learning gains, you'll see big Xs. There were no learning gains calculated in last year's school grade. There will be in this coming school year, so you see the big Xs. All that we were graded on was proficiency. Think for each test, each kid gets a level three through five. As an example, ELA, which we can call reading, part of our district grade is out of 100%. What percentage of our kids were at levels three through five? You see the 46. And that went into our district grade. So 46% of our students that tested in PM3 were levels three through five. Math, as you can see in green, 43% were levels three through five. Science, 52%, you can see in purple. Social studies in blue. Middle school acceleration, which was 74. Graduation rate, as you heard, was 91. College and career acceleration for high school was 70. And when you average that out, we were at 63. Total of 439 points, but we were 63%, which gave us a rating of a B. You have a handout that's, looks like a spreadsheet that goes through each of the district grades in the state. Dr. Prince is modeling it for you. You can look at that at your leisure, it's represented a little bit differently, but this is essentially how it works. Okay, I'll pause there for just a second. So as we mentioned, this year, FY23 was what's called an informational. So, as we mentioned, this year FY23 was what's called an informational baseline year. And I put some quotes up there from the state of Florida. But what is a baseline year? It's essentially testing when the DOE changes standards and you're testing in essentially a new exam. And in that, it's the first year, the state does not want you to have consequences as you typically would. They also remove learning gains. So, the most recent baseline years we had, as Dr. Prince mentioned earlier, was FY23, last school year. That's when we transitioned from the FSA to FAST. Last year FY23 was our first year of FAST testing. FY22, the year before, was our last year of FSA. In 2015, we also transitioned from the FCAT, which was the last year was 2014, to the FSA in 2015. In those years, learning gains are not calculated. So, we just want you to really remember that part. We don't get credit for what our district typically does so well is moving kids across levels and up levels. Doesn't include it in a baseline year. Okay? So, let's take a look at baseline years. And I want you to frame your minds around that concept of baseline years. Most specifically, we want to see where we rank. And Dr. Prince spoke to just how important rank is. So, we want to compare 2015 to 2023. Where was our rank as a district in 2015? Where is it in 2023? And how do we compare it to our similar or neighboring counties?
And the reason I wanted to share this with the board once again is to, so the board in a baseline year can see kind of the that was then, this is now look of how far we've come. And as part of this, we are going to be doing some comparisons to our Treasure Coast and adjacent districts. But, you know, we have so much, and I can't thank our school administrators enough. We have so much to be proud of and we can see how far we've come. But 2023 is important because the last time this happened was in 2015, where we had a baseline and then we're moving forward. But the comparison is absolutely fascinating to see where we were compared to where we are. Thanks. So, I told you I was going to interrupt.
No, it's good because I can take a breath. Sometimes I talk too fast. If I do, just let me know. Dr. Wild says I'm at a good pace, so I'll keep that up. So, let's look at total points, okay, of our neighboring counties. And we're not going to look at percentages. This is ranking. So, this is our St. Lucy County, if you see in 2015, in total district points. When you added up all those tests, science, social studies, reading and math, we were ranked 47th in the most previous baseline year. We gained 12 positions in 2023 to where we are now ranked 35th, again, out of 67 districts. Palm Beach County fell two positions from 16th to 18th. Indian River, there was no change. They were at 13th in the baseline year of 2015. And in this most recent baseline year, they remained at 13. No change. Martin County dropped 12 positions. They fell from fifth ranked at a 67 to 17th ranked at a 67. Okeechobee did not have a change either. They were ranked 60th in 2015. They are now ranked 60th in total points as of 2023. Let's take a look at our individual cells. I showed you ELA, which also means reading. I showed you math. How do we rank in 2015 versus 2023? So, if you look at, as a reminder, we're going to go through each of the cells individually. ELA, math, science, social studies. So, how do we look in 2015? We're actually ranked 50th in ELA achievement, English Language Arts or reading achievement. We are now ranked 43rd. We gained seven positions. St. Lucy math. Yes, we want to improve this, but we did increase two positions, 56 to 54. Science went from 51st to 37th. We gained 14 positions. And the arrows get actually darker in green as we have bigger increases. Our social studies moved from 47th to 40th.
Craig, go back two, please. Sorry. I'm just, I can't say this enough. And my principals, the principals have heard this. That's unacceptable, being 54th out of 67 counties in math. That's, you know, I'm very transparent, you know, with regards to information, transparent with the performance of the district. I own this. We have to be better here because that is not where we should be. We should be nowhere below 45th and, you know, could get as high as 30, 25 to 30. But we have to be better and we're taking a close look at what we're doing, not just from a teacher capacity standpoint, but a scope and sequence, materials, because this is an area that we can improve on. Sorry about that, Craig.
So, as I mentioned, science increased 14 positions from 51st to 37th. Social studies increased seven positions. Our ranking went from 47th out of 67 to 40th. And then middle school acceleration increased 20 positions from 38 to 18th. And middle school acceleration is all about providing access to students in middle school to high school level coursework, which would include Algebra, Geometry, and potentially industry certification. College and career acceleration, which is high school, that's again, college credit access for our high school students, as well as industry certification, went from 24th to 12th. We gained 12 positions. And then graduation rate, we gained 29 positions, went from 41st to 12th. And we expect to be in a similar position after this evening, this past evening's results came out. We expect to be in 12th again, based on the results. So, when you put it all together, we did gain in each of the accountability cells that I shared with you. So, let's compare ourselves to our surrounding counties. And this is us again in a slightly smaller picture. You see up arrows in each of the assessment cells from 2015 to 2023. Here you have Martin. Green represents an increase. The darker the green, the larger the increase. Red would represent a decrease. And this is meant to give you just the big picture. I know some of the writing is small. But you can see that we increased in all seven and neither of the districts that surround us were able to accomplish what we did from 2015 to 2023. Okay? So, looking at school performance, we're proud to say that from 2015 to 2023, looking now at individual schools, 12 of our schools increased at least one grade level when comparing the baseline of 2015 to 2023. Three schools increased two grade levels. Only five schools decreased a grade level and two decreased two grade levels. So, more went up than decreased. And we just want to highlight the three schools that increased the two grades. A shout out to the principals that are here. We'll talk to them, about them in just a minute. But CA Moore went from an F in the 2015 baseline to a C. Sam Gaines went from a D to a B. And Manatee Kate went from a C to an A. Now, putting some data to all of our schools, we want to compare 2015, which is the dark, the burnt orange, to 2023, which is in the blue. And we want to see what distribution of grades did we have this past year versus 2015. So, we see the top left. We see how many As and Bs did we have in 2015 in burnt orange? We had 30% of our schools in 2015 were As and Bs. Just beneath that, you see the blue. That, we increased that to 50% of our schools as As and Bs in 2023. Cs in 2015 were approximately 50% of our district. We decreased that to just over 40%. Ds was about 15% approximately in 2015. We decreased that to under 10%. It's about 8% of our schools. And of course, celebration, we had about 6% Fs, I want to say. We have none now. There are no failing schools as per our 2023 baseline. So, we're very happy to celebrate that. And that's not easy to do because if you look actually at our charters, which were not included in the last slide, charters in 2015, about 75% of our charters were As and Bs, and in 2023 was about 33%. And then looking at charters for Cs in 2015, about 25% of our charters were Cs. They are now close to 70%. It's about 67%. So...
Go back one real quick, Craig. You know, I think it's important to note, if, go back one more. You know, if we're looking at our baseline year proficiency only model, between 2015 to 2023, this is a real clear illustration of our schools moving in the right direction. That's very positive news. We've got a lot more As and Bs. We have no failing schools. If you go to the next slide, the charters where in 2015, the majority of those schools were As and Bs. In 2023, the new baseline, we've actually seen somewhat of a regression with the charters, where the majority of those schools and the vast majority are C rated. Move on, Craig.
That's, then questions?
Yeah. So, it's up to the board and I'd leave it to the Chair, Ms. Hawley. We're about an hour and 20 minutes in. We probably have a few more minutes with Dr. Summer before we get to the next topic. If you wanted to, you know, I was going to recommend maybe taking a break, coming back. And if there's any questions, board members want to ponder about, because right now, we're at a section where we're putting the past to rest. We've talked about 2015 to 2022 with the FSA. We've talked about the baseline comparison from 2015 to 2023. Now, we're going to be pivoting to PM2 results and how our students are doing. You know, how do we look this year compared to last year and the supports that we give to our schools? So, I did want to see if you wanted to have any questions now or if you want to wait until after the break and then if they think of anything, we can. Okay?
Can I just have one remark? If you could go back four, go back to St. Lucy Accountability Cells, Treasure Coast baseline comparisons. There, that's amazing. You only had that up for about 10 seconds. I mean, really, look at that. I think it might have been mentioned that we had a higher graduation rate last, you know, within Martin County, three years in a row. We might have mentioned that. But the thing that hasn't been mentioned, Troy, is that we are two and a half times or at least two times bigger. We have over 40,000. What do they have, 16,000 students down there?
We're about three times, three times the size.
And with Indian River, they're about one-third the size of our, I mean, they're even smaller. So, to look at that and not see one red arrow going down, I'm pretty proud of that. And again, we were number one last year in, over Martin County. So, I'm sorry, folks, but 12, 14 years on the city council has to listen to my southern neighbor about this stuff and now us being on top. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to use it. And I think everybody else should too. We're number one. And thank all you guys for that.
How long you want to take a break?
Jack made a good point in that we're so much larger than these other districts. We have so many more students that we have to address and we have to look at and we have to make sure that all of those children are getting the attention that they need based on what, how much they need. And also, when you look at what you've discussed with us today, in 2015, we started out, and even now, we have a lot more students, but we started out lower. We've had a much bigger climb that we've had to make even to be where we are now today. And as has been mentioned by Dr. Prince, you know, that math, that's unacceptable. We do need to get that math up and also our reading scores without third graders. But we started out so low and now we can see that we're moving up. And it takes time to do this type of stuff. I work with kids every day after school. And we've got a whole room of different levels of kids where they are. And those students that are testing in the ones and twos, it's so much more work we have to do with them to get them to be able to get up where they need to be at. And yet, it can be done, but it takes a lot. So, again, as we've said already to our principals that's here today, welcome. I'm glad you're here. But we know how hard it is to get those children up to par. They come from different situations. You know, we've got to deal with all of, address with all of that. And you are doing a fantastic job in that we are raising up those levels and making gains. Not where we want to be, but we're not where we have been.
Well, to your point, Dr. Mills, and once again, another good point. In a baseline year, that does not include learning gains in reading and math, nor does it include learning gains in the lowest 25%. All four of those areas are areas that we usually perform in the top third in the state because of the work that we do with our lowest performing students. So, I am hopeful and encouraged, especially with what Craig is going to be sharing shortly, that this year, learning gains will be part of the equation. And I anticipate that we're going to have a very, very strong year. And we still have 62 days left until we take the PM3, but who's counting?
So, am I looking at, when you say there's 11 cells and we've talked about seven?
Yes.
Are those learning gains, are those learning gains no longer part of the 11 and then they weren't this year? Is that what I'm looking?
Correct. In a baseline year, they don't include learning gains because you can't determine a gain for a student because they're two completely different tests. So, they don't calculate learning gains. They have to have one year of a test and then a second year of the same test in order to tie those two together to see if the student made the appropriate growth that the state wants to see for a student that is far behind. In fact, for a student to get credit for a learning gain, if you're a level one student, you've actually got to move further than you would if you were a proficient student. You have, your growth has to be at a higher rate. So, that will be part of the calculation this year because it will be the second year of the FAST test. And I'm optimistic that we're going to be strong because we've, St. Lucy County Public Schools has really been an outlier in, you know, in the top third in those categories. So, I'm optimistic.
And where's the other two cells? Am I missing two cells?
You just have learning gains for all students. That includes every kid that takes the test. And then there's the learning gains, and Dr. Summer shared a slide, of the lowest 25%. And those are your level one, primarily your level one students at every school. Regardless of what school it is, the state is going to look to see, okay, one-fourth of those test takers, the lowest scores, how did those students perform? Because it really is, a proficiency only model benefits affluent districts. It benefits because they're always going to be the most proficient. Economics are directly correlated to test scores. The state tries to equalize that and create a fair playing field by encouraging, by including learning gains, particularly in the lowest 25% so that it ensures that even affluent districts have to support their lowest performing students so they can't be left behind. So, that's why the state includes those. And those are the four areas in gray that were not calculated this past year, but will be calculated this year.
Thank you. And I just want to say one more thing in recognition. Thank you for, same, we are huge. Those two counties below us and they don't, I think they're no growth. And we are still growing and growing and growing. And you three, Dr. Mills, Troy, and Debbie, you were here for this last seven years or 10 years or, I don't know, how long you been here, Troy? 20 something? I don't, whatever. You were here for that growth and I want to thank you. You three were here for all of that and Mr. Gent and yourself and a big part of it. We have such a huge, what is our retention rate on teachers? It's over 50, 60%. Got to thank them too and all the principals, but I've been here, I'm only here for that one term. You stop laughing, sir. Stop. Cut it out.
96%.
96%.
Oh, my God. Even better. Okay. Well, correct me when I'm wrong. But I was able to ride the wave up on top here for the four years because you guys brought us there. So, I came in up on top and Mrs. Richardson also, we came up here at the good time. So, I had a good time and I'm just a cheerleader and I will continue to be. But thank you three for all that you did. You're one of the reasons that we are. Don't look down, Troy. Look up because it's true. You were a big part of it, all three of you. Thank you. And we are huge. Wow. Forty, how many is it? 42,000 students?
We have about 44,000 plus charters, about 3,000, about 47,000 now.
Thank you. Thanks for putting up with me.
10:30?
I think we're, Jack, and I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Madam Chair, is it okay?
Sure.
All right. I think that where you're coming from, Jack, you've also been here. You, serving on the council, city council, you've seen the growth. And you know, as you've mentioned, I mean, the talk was like, what in the world was going on here with our school district? And now, people are very excited about what they're seeing because they've been here and they've watched the growth. And so, it means a lot, what you're saying, because you know what the history is. I always tell people, you should have saw what it was before. You know, if you're complaining now, just imagine how far we've gone up based on where we were at. You should be cheering us on.
All right. Board members and guests, we're going to take a five-minute break. So, back in here at 10:35, please.
Have any further questions on the sections we've completed or?
Have any further questions on the sections we've completed or okay for Dr. Summer to move to the next section? Seeing none, move along. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So, now, we're going to take a look at FY '24. And just if you can remember from the first part, we're looking at PM two or Progress Monitoring Two data, which is our mid-year. And it's, it's the mid-year and it will not go into our end-of-the-year assessment data. It gives us an idea as to where we are. And as a reminder, on both PM one and PM two, the full year is assessed of standards. So, students, we expect them to make significant progress, which they, which they did last year. So, looking at our strategic plan, we want to zero in on, as you can see, we focused on math was our, was, was one of the challenges that we faced in FY '23, which was last school year. So, now, it's in our strategic plan as goal two, to improve math performance in grades three through 10. Same with ELA performance as goals two and three. So, if you look at this slide, I'll break it down. This is comparing our levels again on the PM two, which is the mid-year, by grade level with the total at the bottom. And you, we are comparing ourselves now to last school year, which is known as School Year '23, which is the second column. And then, the third column is this school year, which is SY '24, and then we come up with a difference. So, if I take a look at grade level three as an example to orientate you to this, we see in school year '23, our district was at 29%. That means that 29% were already at proficiency in the middle of the year since they were tested on the full-year standards. This year, we're at 34%, which represents a 5% difference or increase.
Just to be fair, once again, we still have students testing PM two this week. So, this data is somewhat incomplete, so I don't want to mislead the board. We won't have the, the final percentages until Friday, but we will provide you with that.
Great point, Doc.
However, this, based on these numbers here, when it's, it completed, these numbers should go up.
No, not necessarily. They could go up or down. The, the, the bottom line is we're, we, we test approximately 30-something thousand students, so I don't anticipate, because we only have a couple of thousand that haven't tested, I don't anticipate the numbers changing much, maybe a percent here and there, but, but we will update this once and provide it to the board once Friday is over because Friday's the last day. I don't anticipate it, Ms. Richardson, changing much because of the sample size, but I wanted to provide the board with a picture because almost probably 95% of the students in the district have tested.
But in case you were, but to make the point, we don't expect the PM two scores to go much higher, but we do expect the PM three to go significantly higher as they did last year. This just shows apples to apples. Where were we in the middle of the year last year? Where are we in the middle of the year this year in 2024? And we, if you can see the stars, that just shows that we're either matching or exceeding the movement of the state in all grade levels. We are 3% higher this school year, as you can see at the bottom, at 37% than we were last school year.
So, Mrs. Richardson, I know you, you had pointed that out with regards to the percentages. So, last year, 34% of our students were proficient on PM two. At the end of the year, on PM three, 46% were proficient. So, the good news is we're, you know, for all intents and purposes, 3% higher than we were last year, which is good news for us. But there's also another way of looking at this that I think is equally important. So, Craig.
Yeah, let's take a look. So, what, what we find interesting is tracking the student. So, like as a, as a, you know, as an educator, you want to know, okay, last school year in grade three, where are those, those kids are now in grade four. So, we actually have to do a little cascade work and you see the arrow. So, if you look at grade three, in the middle of the year last year, those kids were at 29%. When we look at our grade four group of kids, that was last year's third graders, they're sitting now at 35%. You see the arrow down or the plus six. And we do that for each of the grade levels. And we see we're at plus six when it go, when we look at our current fourth graders because they were in third grade last year. And it helps us really track where we're, how we're moving kids. If you look all the way down to grade eight, we have, you know, we want to celebrate that in grade eight, our current ninth graders are now at 40% this year. Last year, when they took the mid-year in grade eight, they were only at 31%. So, that represents a 9% increase. So, by cohort is important. I'll give you just a second to take a look there. Okay? Now, we want to look at math and you can see the, you know, uniqueness in math. There's a couple of unique, I'll go back, okay?
So, on grade, let's take grade eight.
Sure.
31% to 40%.
So, how does that work? So, if you, yeah, it's, so think of that 31% represents the eighth graders last school year when they were in eighth grade. Next school year, they graduate, they, they move grade levels from eighth grade to ninth and those kids take the mid-year again.
But these kids are the ones that are proficient.
And that's the percentage of the, of that grade level that, that is proficient, level three and above, three, four and five, on the mid-year assessment that tests the entire year of standards. So, correct, that is the proficiency number. Correct. What that 9% shows you is that last year, that group of kids were at 31% proficient. This year, they're at 40% proficient in the next grade. Okay? This way, I'll, I'll just say one, maybe this might help too. This way just shows last year's eighth graders to this year's eighth graders, right? That's how we looked at it first. So, last year's eighth grade was at 31%. This year's eighth grade is at 38%, but when we draw the cascade, that's when we go to comparing last year's eighth graders to this year's ninth graders.
What changed?
We, we hope to share that in just a little bit when we talk about our strategies and our data tracking and our focus on making sure all kids are successful in all cell groups. So, hold that thought because that's a great question and we want to bottle that.
And by the way, Mrs. Richardson, the, the next slide is not as encouraging. So, that, you know, being in all transparency, math continues to be problematic for us that it's a nut that we've just got to figure out how to crack. But keep going.
And the level set this, notice there's no grades nine and 10 because in grades nine and 10, students don't take the FAST math. They take the, the end-of-course exams in algebra and geometry and they do that in eighth grade and some kids in seventh. So, I need to explain that a lot of our highest kids in middle school are not in this number and our high school kids are not in this number. If you look to the bottom, in all grade levels in math, we're actually down one percentage point when compared to last year at the mid-year. Last year, if you look at the bottom in F, in school year '23, 25% of our kids reached proficiency in math by the mid-year, which by the way, it's kind of intuitive, right? Because math is cumulative, you know, you learn a lot. You don't expect the numbers to be that high. We want to beat our previous score. We're at 24, which by the way, matches where the state is, okay? Our negative one is the same as the state. We're one point behind where we were last year, which ties the state of Florida. Again, just looking at the FAST math, not including the EOCs, okay?
And Craig, I want to build on, if you look at seventh grade, you know, when you, you take a look at last year's seventh graders to this year's seventh grader is, you know, down 14% on PM two. You know, I talk about intentionality and, and we've expanded our acceleration opportunities for our seventh grade. In the past, we focused primarily on eighth grade for providing opportunities for students to take the algebra and then the geometry. But we are very aggressively identifying students and many of those students, once again, would not have had an opportunity, but they're taking accelerated courses in seventh grade now. And because they do, they don't, those are all proficient students that don't take this assessment in seventh grade. So, your, your students that are levels three, fours and fives, they're now taking potentially an accelerated class and that's a big chunk of kids that are not testing this year that last year they were testing because we've expanded that opportunity for those students this year in seventh grade. So, that's, there's an easy justification for that, the 14%.
So, that means that these kids that are taking the math test, because we took out the ones that are proficient, these are the ones that are not proficient. So, we are going to get this, we have to work on getting them to that proficiency level.
That is, that is correct.
Yep.
So, that would, that makes sense that they would, that we would have this, this number.
Exactly.
That makes, that makes sense.
Yes.
So, I understand that why we are concerned, but that is not saying that the whole district is not proficient. It's just saying this percentage of the district is not proficient because we have a whole another group of kids that are proficient.
Correct.
So, this, I don't.
Well, well, an oversimplification.
Pardon me?
I said, I'm going to, I'm going to make an overgeneralization or an oversimplification. Last year, PM two, we were at 25%. This year, we're at 24%. I would like to see us moving in the green and not in the red because I just went through the fact that we're ranked 52nd out of 67 counties in math. That is not going to move the needle for us. We have to be self-reflective of what we're doing and how we're instructing math to our kids because there are comparable districts that are performing much better. I can, I can make, I know why in seventh grade, that number is that number. What's problematic to me is systemically, math continues to be an area that we've struggled with in St. Lucy County that we should be better and it's going to be a, a big area of focus for us second semester because we've seen schools, and I'll, I'll use two examples, Parkway, CA Moore doubled their proficiency and I'm going, talking about going from 20% to 40-something percent. And Parkway, Latonya, I can't remember, you, were you in the 60s? 62, I'm shocked that I remember that. But in a single year, it made significant improvements. And where you look at, reading is a really hard needle to move. Math is something that is concrete sequential for kids and we should be able to move that at a faster rate, but we haven't been able to. And I'm, you know, we're looking internally, you know, in teaching and learning, you know, we're looking in our schools, the supports that we provide, but that is an area that I think we can, we can have some robust movement, but we didn't see it on PM two yet. So, I just wanted to, I just wanted to be transparent and confront the obvious. We have to do better in math. That's an expectation I have for myself. That's an expectation I have for our school principals. That's the expectation I have for our teaching and learning and the supports we provide in our school because that's got to be better. It's got to be better. If we want to get to where we want to go, we have to be in the 30s or at the midway point, you know, comparably, be ranked 34 out of 67 districts, not 52, if we want to be an A-rated district. That's just a fact. So, we have to move that in order to, to get to where we need to be.
But if you put back those kids, well, let's say theoretically, if you put them back and they test, then you'll get, you'll, you'll move up in the run.
Well, I may have better results. The problem is, Mrs. Richardson, if I do that, those kids may not have an opportunity to take a high school class in middle school. Those kids wouldn't have an opportunity to take a college class in high school. I'm just saying that, that our, and, and I'm not, I know you're not suggesting that. What I'm trying to say is.
Thank you.
That, that, that we all want is what is best for our kids and we're trying to open doors for our children. And in some cases with kids that, that don't have opportunity, we need to, to break doors down. And that's what we're doing, even if it costs us here, I think it will pay off for us with the opportunities it provides us. And that's why we are ranked so high in our acceleration, middle school, is because opportunity in our county is colorblind. But we need to do a better job, to your point, of the, the kids that are left in the cohort, we've got to do a better job of moving them to proficiency because we have opportunity. There is, you know what? If, it's like meat on a bone, I'm, I'm not hungry, but there's a whole lot of meat left. We need to make sure that we get to it.
Thank you. So, in terms of percentages, percentage, how many kids are we talking about that are in this, 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 on this paper as opposed to the ones that we have moved on that are taking algebra, da, 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 da? Is, is it, is it half and half? Is it, I mean?
Well, I think you.
I guess the amount.
In the December meeting, I think there was a, a line you made, you know, 5% is 1,300 students. Okay? You know, that's going to be the ballpark grades, probably fewer because that's, you were referring to grades three through 10. Grades three through eight, it's probably going to be eight or 900 students. We've got to get to proficiency to get 5%. And, and 5%, that is, that to me is, is achievable because of the, you see districts moving math far quicker than you see them moving reading proficiency. That's just a fact. So, you know, those are the kind of things that we need to attack aggressively.
Thank you.
And then, on a positive, each of the stars represent where we have either met or exceeded the state movement average in terms of the change. So, as an example, that 4% meets or exceeds where the grade three is in the state of Florida when comparing to the prior year. So, not, you know, not all is pointing, oop, not all is pointing in the wrong direction. Again, looking at our cohorts, you see some pluses, some minuses. This is an area that we'll continue to focus on. And I think we had questions. Are there any more questions?
Dr. Summer, before the break, you were going a little slower. You picked up speed. Could you slow it down?
Slow it down? Absolutely. Let me know if I go too fast. I tend to do that sometimes.
Thank you.
So, we'll talk now about St. Lucy Strategies for System Improvement and really want to mention our Theory of Action for Academic Success, which really speaks to our district leadership, our principals onto our students. And if you think about this, the goal here is the methodology of if leadership provides data, resources and training to principals, then principals can improve their instructional staff, their teachers through training and through their CLPs. That enables our teachers to teach better when it comes to standards-based instruction and world, a world-class opportunity for all kids. And when that happens from teachers, our students' learning is maximized. And we start with our district staff. We talk about when it comes to supervision of principals. If we'd have our executive directors stand just for a second. Mona Ray, Miller Buchanan, Latricia Woolard, Daryl Canamos. And we also have a Director of School Renewal that serves our, our schools that are at the most need of assistance, Ms. Diane Lanenbeck. You guys can stand if you haven't already. Everybody see how, all right, you got great smiles. That's a good thing this time of year. And just really briefly, what is an executive director? Well, they visit our schools and work with our principals daily. And they're the principal's mentor, coach, and of course supervisor with a highlight ideally of mentor and coach. And they run principal's CLPs to ensure that best practices are shared district-wide. We have some incredible principals and we don't just want that to be a pocket of brilliance. We want brilliance spread district-wide and we also need to provide tiered level support. So, not all schools get the same level of support based on their need. And I always say, the executive director is a thought partner and a problem solver for the principal, sometimes a therapist, right? I was a principal. I called my executive director when I needed some, some assistance, but they also coordinate walks and they're the liaison when it comes to our district departments. And we have an incredible district staff and I'm kind of grouping some departments together here and I just, I'm unofficially titled there. This is our Curriculum and Academic Leadership Group. It's Denise Rodriguez, if you want to stand, Dr. Liz Pruitt, Heather Belitho, Dr. Adrian Ocampo, Heather Rowland, Mr. Nada, Rod Nada and Dr. Sunny Booker. Awesome group of individuals and thank you guys so much. They're on school sites as well, developing curriculum and assessment resources for our students and they manage and distribute data. They also provide professional development. And one of my favorites is, especially when it comes to some of our students that are at the most, you know, our students with disabilities or our ELL students, they ensure that support services for all student groups are provided. So, we thank them for that, but really, it's a collaborative effort with our executive directors. And then, not to say that one group's more important than others, but hey, listen, we don't want to forget about principals, okay? Principals matter. We know this because teachers and leaders and principals are the most important when it comes to student achievement when we talk about data. So, we can get our principals to stand and be recognized. I think we should give them a big round of applause. Principals, please stand. Thank you guys so much. Well, if you think about, you know, how, how much of an impact can a principal have? Well, the Wallace Foundation actually put a study to this over a couple of decades that shows that when you replace a principal that's not as effective with a principal that is highly effective, that results in additional 2.9 months of learning for all students in math and 2.7 months of learning for all students in the school in reading. That's how much of a difference principals make. So, if you think about this, and there's some more words speak out there, but what it basically says is, yeah, there's nothing better than a teacher. A great teacher is like gold, but the teachers only get to impact the students that they have. The principal's impact goes across the entire school. So, we put the best principal and we grow our principals to become the best and share those best practices. That's how we really spread to a successful system. So, principals don't just matter, principals really matter. And when it comes to working with principals, they'll tell you, having served as a principal myself, I've only got so much time, right? My time. My time is limited, so I, why do we use data so that we can be more effective and more efficient at what we're doing? We monitor all kinds of data components, from academics and reading and math to academic tech usage for things like iReady, attendance, of course, which is one of our initiatives, discipline, grade, suspension, scheduling. We monitor our iSucceed students. We monitor acceleration and graduation, industry cert, and so on. And what courses our kids get access to, we monitor scheduling. And this goes to a scope and sequence throughout the year. So, I'm going to save some time for us today and just kind of maybe zero in on one item for the sake of time and think about where we are. And Dr. Prince mentioned it. We take a look at where we are in the school year, and I'll come back to another slide. We're right here, okay? So, we are at 62 days from PM 3. 62 days. So, each, right now, as an example of what we do in terms of our systems, we're in the middle of what's called our mid-year action planning. So, each school principal and each school team is setting their action plans for those accountability cells that you saw earlier today. So, for ELA reading, for math, for the low 25 as an example, what is your plan? And most importantly, it's got to have a list of, well, where are you meeting expectations? Where are you not meeting expectations? What are you seeing that maybe you're not reaching the goal? So, when we look at our data from the PM 2, what is it that you're missing? Most importantly, develop a detailed action plan and highlight on those subgroups of students that are not meeting or exceeding the goals that we've outlined because we want every single student group to reach the goals that we've set. Because we, we're not an A district unless we're an A district for all students. That is our goal. And when we do that, it enables our kids to graduate. But then, of course, provide that action plan, the who, what, when, where, and how, and work with your district partner to see exactly what support you need. If we do this, this is what moves our kids, and this is what gets us to be the outlier that we are. That's how, that, those are our systems, and I abbreviate that for you a little bit. And I'll take some questions on that part. I just have one last piece on attendance that I'll cover right after this. Any questions?
They weren't important?
What's that?
You went through some slides.
I did. Just for the sake of time, I wanted to get through. I did skip past a couple as per our request-
Yeah, I told him to move it along a little bit because we do have one more before. And we also have a little reception for Chris Harrison. I know, Chris, you can't get out of the limelight. I know you love it, so. But I told Craig, those were not as important. We can wrap back around if you have individual questions. Also, board members, I'm just going to say I apologize in advance because there are also slides at the very end that were versions or different versions of slides that we rejected or didn't want. So, we're almost finished. I can just say that. The only part that he moved quickly on was the school improvement, the school improvement cycle of improvement and just how we provide support. We didn't miss much, but I just want to make sure that we get, we get done on time. Let's put it that way.
I know time is of essence, but those school improvement plans, whether or not you want to do it here or at a later time, but for me, those are important. I'd like to hear about the school improvement.
Go back a couple of slides, Greg, because we, I think about the only thing that we kind of brushed over was the-
An example of how we would monitor academics. So, you know, we know, reading and math, if you looked at our district accountability matrix, we're bringing learning gains in this school year as per the state. So, you know, we want to provide as many relevant data points as possible to guide instruction. So, what our district does, and you know, a huge shout-out to our Office of Teaching and Learning, is they provide district-based assessments that give us more focused feedback at the right time of the year in between our progress monitoring that we share by grade level with schools. And it allows schools throughout the school year in between the progress monitoring because there's a lot of time between the baseline of PM 1 and the assessment of PM 2 that you want to be able to use data to drive instruction. So, we put together in our district department of assessment and accountability and our Office of Teaching and Learning work together to get this data prepared and ready for all of our principals, and we create a cycle of data monitoring every week so that we, when principals get this on Monday morning at 6:00 AM, they're able to guide their learning at their site, feeding into our Theory of Action to make sure that when principals get the data, they can meet with teachers and they can identify student need based on what they're seeing. And that's just some of our systems that we use in addition to what the state provides because, because it provides us better feedback than what the state gives us. And that gives us our cycle. And it also allows us as a district that when we see areas of weakness, we're able to provide additional support. Okay? I hope that provides a little bit more, okay? And then, of course, the last thing I'll mention really briefly is, we also have schools that are identified by the state in need of additional support and additional tiered support, and that's what our Director of School Renewal, Ms. Diane Lanenbach oversees. So, we literally build in strategically throughout the year additional resources because it makes the most sense. School that needs the most help should get the most assistance. So, this is an example of the schedules that we build. That can be, that can change based on the data that we see to schools that need the most support to make sure that they get to where we want them to. And again, that's just a reminder of our timeline. I don't think anyone mentioned today that we have 62 days until PM 3. We want to create that sense of urgency. Sorry, principals, I know it's a pit in your stomach. So, real briefly, I'll touch on attendance. We're very proud to talk about Goal 1. And I think that you've had a presentation on attendance, so I'll, you know, keep it really brief, talking about just some of the great initiatives from the banners to the, some of the initiatives at the website, the marketing, the teams on the district attendance teams, the social workers going out to visit homes. We have a really great combination of district support and school-based focus. Kudos to the principals for doing it. So, let's just take a quick look as to where we are at the end of the first semester comparing this year to last, and we just want to celebrate. Because if you take a look at this and you see the top bar, it shows our absentee rate. Our absentee rate has decreased from 9.6% to 8.77%. That's about a percent, that's approximately 400 students additional per day that are now attending school this year compared to last. When you look at the, at the school level and you look at high schools, our absentee rate has dropped from 11.9 to 10.5. That's a 1.4% de, I'm sorry, that is a 1.4 increase in attendance, but more importantly, look at the decrease in the absences. That's almost 10% of a decrease in absenteeism. Middle schools almost double that. They've almost decreased, they've actually decreased their absentee rate by about 20% where the absentee rate in 2023 for middle schools was 11.02%. In the middle of the year comparing this year to last, they've dropped that to 8.66. We're super happy for our secondary schools, especially our middle schools. You see the biggest increase in attendance and lowest drop in absentee rate, right? Because we want that to carry through to high school and graduation. So, huge success there. Thank you to the groups that have participated and contributed. That's about four additional students per day is what we averaged in the first half of the year compared to last year. And that's it. Any questions?
Just one remark about, we have a long, we have a long way to go on, on attendance here, I know that. And I noticed one of the last things, you only had to sheet up for a minute, one of the last things with parent involvement. And honestly, I don't know how you do that because I go way back 100 years ago when my kids were in. And if you had a parent-teacher thing, you couldn't get enough room to get the parents in a room. And I don't know how we get that back, but I think that's important. And going back to one other thing that I made a misnomer in about the teacher retention rate, I think what you referred to, 97% was the year-to-year retention rate. I did not, I failed to mention because you're talking about the principals and our administrators. I think in, Dr. Wild, you would know, I think you told me, and I was very impressed it, over 15 years, teach, over 15 years, our retention rate is 56% on teachers. Isn't that one of the highest in the state, I was told? 56% of our teachers have been with us over 15 years. And that directly, that metric directly goes to the principals and the administrators right away of how well they're doing. And I know it's, if not the highest, Troy, would you know, you know all that stuff.
Mr. Frank.
One of the highest rates in the, yeah. So, it goes right to you folks and you're doing a great job, and I hope that even goes up. The longer we keep the teachers, the better. And the last thing I want to say is, you had big shoes to fill, sir, and you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Dr. Prince. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Summer. Before we bring up our last speaker, I just wanted, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, if I get the day wrong, but I believe we are going to be processing and our teachers will receive a retro check on Thursday. Yay! So, that's a big deal. We'll make sure to message that out. So, I want to take finance and HR, that's literally thousands and thousands of lines. We're going to be pivoting now to, this is really important. It's our last item, and that is the Halfpenny Sales Tax Renewal. Dr. Wild is going to be presenting this to the board. This will be a board voting item in February. There is a process to get something on the ballot. We are also doing something a little bit unique is that we are going to the voters early. We're going two years early. And Dr. Wild will explain why we're doing that. And it really comes down to making sure our voters are educated and aware because in 2026, if we do not do this early, we would have two renewals going to voters, which could be confusing. So, we wanted to take one bite of the apple at a time, and Dr. Wild is going to be presenting on this initiative for you. Dr. Wild?
Good morning again, everyone. I notice a theme here. I get the most exciting topics, don't I? Okay, continuing on the topic of continuation of the Halfpenny School Capital Outlay Sales Surtax. First, just some highlights on this. As Dr. Prince just shared, voters will be asked to vote on the continuation of the Halfpenny Sales Tax in November of 2024. Just a reminder, this does not increase taxes. It remains the same because this is an existing tax. Every dollar that's raised through the Halfpenny Sales Tax does stay here right in St. Lucie County, even though it is paid by not only residents shopping, but also tourists, visitors, anybody stopping off 95. With that said, the funds are used to renovate classrooms and improve operational efficiency of our buildings, our school buildings, to improve school safety and security of the buildings, and to refresh technologies and to keep them current as we move to newer technologies every day. This, of course, people like to work in up-to-date buildings, refresh buildings, so it does help with teacher recruitment and retention. Just some history and some background for anyone who's not aware of how long we have been levying this Halfpenny Sales Tax. We brought this to voters initially in 1996 for a 10-year period, and then it was continued on the 2005 referendum for a 20-year period. That 20-year period terminates on December 31st, 2026. Those funds have been used on many, many things during that entire period. So, this list is not all-inclusive, but some highlights for you, some reminders of what we have been able to accomplish with this. First of all, let's start with a very visible current one. We just did the groundbreaking for Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. We're very excited about that new school for the students and for the faculty at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. Also, the current Fort Pierce Central High School, Sam Gaines Academy of Emerging Technologies, Alapata Flats, K-8, that was partially funded through this Halfpenny Sales Tax, St. Lucie West Centennial, which was under construction around the time of the initial one. We use these funds for the furniture fixtures and equipment. Also, over this time period, we've done renovations to many schools. Some of those include CA Moore. These are like additions that were made. Chester A. Moore Elementary, White City Elementary, Lawnwood Elementary, Dan McCarty Middle School, and other renovations district-wide. We also, some of you remember, we had converted a lot of our schools either from middle schools to K-8 schools or from elementary to K-8 schools. So, Northport Middle School became a K-8, Fort Pierce Magnet School of the Arts, which is now cast, was converted to a K-8. St. Lucie West Middle School to a K-8. Chester A. Moore is now beginning that conversion to a K-8. We've also been able to use these funds for security cameras, for alarms, for technology, for portables back when they were needed, and for other district-wide equipment purchases. We have some current and upcoming projects, just a few to name. The Westwood Academy I mentioned, the Triple D Tradition High School, the new Creative Arts Academy Cafeteria, which is going to be a brand-new cafeteria, future Chester A. Moore conversion with a gymnasium for a K-8 school, a gymnasium for Palm Point so that Palm Point K-8 has the same gymnasium-type facility as our other K-8s, and a future K-8 school for growth. Why is Dr. Prince proposing taking this to the voters early? It does a lot of things for us. It allows for maximum voter input because this is a presidential election cycle. It also provides more certainty in long-range planning because we are obviously going through a period of rapid growth right now. It ensures our buying power. So, when we are going out for bonds to build buildings, it does ensure buying power because certainty of the funding. They look at the tax rate and see that we're going to have the funds. And it helps to reduce confusion between the Sales Surtax, which is the Halfpenny Sales Surtax, and the continuation of the Millage referendum that's used for other purposes. Separates that and reduces confusion. This is our proposed current ballot language. This language we worked through with Legal and Steve Vancore's company, and this is the proposal of what the language would say going out on November 5th, 2024. Just going to give you a minute to read that on the screen or in your slide. And the steps for this process, first of all, we have today to discuss it with the board, and then the superintendent will discuss it with the superintendent, I'm sorry, the Supervisor of Elections, as well as the Board of County Commissioners to recommend the Surtax renewal be held on November 5th, 2024. It will also then require that the board adopt a resolution that we would bring to you on February 13th. And this is sort of an accelerated timeline, so that, we will be ready for that on, on that date. And after adopting the resolution, it then has to go to the Board of County Commissioners. And so, we would be asking them to put it on their board agenda, and at least 180 days before the election, we must provide the final resolution that you adopt to the Office of Program and Policy Analysis, OPAGA. And then, the ballot language must be submitted, the official ballot language must be submitted to the Supervisor of Election 90 days prior to the election. And there are two date certains that we would also be noticing that referendum to the public in the newspaper, September 30th and October 14th. And then, once again, to wrap back up with those highlights, just a reminder to everybody that this is not a new tax. This is a continuation and the purpose of these dollars and how it helps our students and our community, our economy, and our constituents. Any questions?
Just wanted to add a couple of things for our board members. You know, we did, we had a poll basically looking at how the voters perceive the district and also the voters perceive this issue. Very, very strong polling numbers with regards to the public support and the public belief that we're spending our dollars wisely. In addition to that, I've had private conversations with our business leaders, some of our elected leaders, some, you know, the bottom line is we want to move forward with this now, and we don't anticipate there will be any other continuation or new requests by any of the municipalities or the county. So, it's really important for us to take one bite of the apple at a time. This is a sales tax continuation. It's not anything new for our voters. And in 2026, we will have our Millage, which is basically property tax. And it's very difficult to go forward with two continuations because it confuses our voters, and we want to make sure that our voters know exactly what they're continuing. And that's why we want to do one thing at a time. So, it makes- And that's why we want to do one thing at a time. So it makes sense to us to move forward and to bring this to the board. And my goal is to be bringing it to you to approve in February.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, can you email me the previous one? Because I don't see the language. Was there a slide that had the language of the previous one?
The 2005 ballot?
Well, I want to go back to 1996, because there are addendums to it, too.
Okay.
And then also...
Absolutely, we can do that.
I do have some concerns about the way that's written, that we need to talk, I have some concerns about the way this is written, and we prefer to talk to it privately.
Absolutely.
And Madam Chair, the one question I have, it mentions proportional shares to the charter schools. How is that measured? What's the proportional share measured on? If, I don't know if you can answer that.
Excellent question, Mr. Kelly. It is measured based on the percentage of students in the district. It's based on total enrollment. So we look at the student enrollment at the time, and then it's proportionate based on that math. It's a standardized system across the state.
So if 8% of our students are charter students, 8% of the dollars would go to those charter, to those charters?
And I might as well say it right now. I got to go to my friend, Dr. Mills here. She says all the time about teaching the whole student. You bring it up. Wasn't it mentioned here that Palm Point, now that we've taken it over, we have to build a gymnasium at Palm Point to make it, because charter schools don't educate the whole child. And I'm sorry if some people don't like it, but I can say what I want, right, Deb? They don't. They don't have gymnasiums. They don't, they don't have drama clubs. They don't, they don't do that. So you have to make up for that in some way and...
Well, to your point, Mr. Kelly, in the next couple of years, you know, my priority at this time is the CA Moore conversion. We're looking to expand and convert that to a K-8. And they will get a school gym, because they will be a K-8. They'll be converting that to, along with some other upgrades at CA Moore. Palm Point, though, would be in line as well to get a gym, because we want all of our K-8s to have the same resources. And, you know, Palm Point, although it is a K-8, is the only school without a gym.
Yeah, just, I don't want to get, but they just do not have the same resources that public schools do. Back in the day, again, 100 years ago, if a private school was a private school, we have to, I'm going to drop it.
I have a question, I guess, with this, and I don't know if, but anyway, I'm going to ask it anyway. In the language here, it says with eligible charter schools. Are some charter schools not eligible?
No, all charter schools that we have approved, I'm just saying that are part of our, is part of our system, they will get a proportionate share of those dollars based on their enrollment. So if the enrollment at Tradition Renaissance is 1,400 students, they would get a proportional share of 1,400 based on the, you know, 47,000 students that we, that we have. They, every student would get the same amount of dollars regardless of charters or public. The only, the only schools right now that would not get this would be the private schools, because they're not our schools. Charter schools are public schools. Yep, charter schools are public schools. So they would get the same share per student as, as any of our regular school district-run public schools.
Okay, I guess the operative word was eligible.
Yeah, I think that basically means as recognized by the state, that they are a registered charter school and approved by the board.
That's really right out of the state legislation.
Correct.
Okay, just making sure, because, you know, it's there, eligible. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for mentioning that, John. Charter schools are private schools. I mean, are public schools. I understand that. They're not private schools. Sometimes they come across that way, but they are public schools.
Right, right. But it only takes certain level of kids.
I know.
And you're saying that this money can only be used for what we have it stated here for?
That's correct. It is defined in statute. And actually, yeah, it's not on that slide. But yes, it can only be used for what's defined in statute, which is everything I went over with capital improvements.
Mr. Superintendent, does that conclude your items to bring before us?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. Well, board members, I have one item for you all. You know, we're in the midst of a, an attorney search for, to serve the board members. And the period has come and gone. We have five applicants that have submitted either a letter of request to present or some historical background about their firm. So I have a packet for each of you to take and go through. And at our February 12th board meeting, we will have open public discussion. And at that time, I'd like for you to come prepared to say, we want to interview all five of them, or we want to interview such and such of them. And then we will set those interviews up after that particular board meeting. If there are none of these that seem to meet a consensus of approval, then we'll begin the process again. But we've got some strong candidates here and the ones that I've purviewed. I have stayed in touch with each of them, telling them as our process goes along, how we're doing it and all. And it is, takes a bit to have the public notice and all. So I'll get these packets to you today or at this moment. And just as a reminder, we will be voting on this at our February meeting, so it is under sunshine and we're not to talk to one another about the various applicants. We need to do that during the public meeting on February 12th. Okay? Thank you for your diligence in going through them. And we'll look forward to good conversation on the February 12th board meeting. Any other items to come before us?
Just, I would invite the board up. 11:30, we're having our reception. The highlight of Chris's day is going to be upstairs, where we're going to have a reception. Cabinet will be there, as well as some friends, some faces from the past. So we're looking forward to having Chris up there and acknowledging her many years of service. Principals, you are released until 12:45, and we'll be back in here at 12:45. And that concludes everything.
Before we end, board, please, let us stand and give a rounding ovation to our principals.
It is a delight to have you here with us.
Excuse me, before you hit the gavel...
Mrs. Richardson?
Principals, I don't always get the opportunity to speak to you or see you, you know, all together in one room. So I myself would like to take this opportunity to thank you for everything that you do. You are, I keep telling everybody else, but honestly, you are the first contact at our schools. It's the principals. You are like the daddy and the mommy of the schools. And, you know, it is very, very important that we appreciate you, and you know how much you are appreciated. So for myself, I would like to thank you for everything that you do for our students and for our community. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, board members, look forward to seeing you upstairs. We are now adjourned.